Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is this, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start with introductions down here to my right, please.
Dan Poison, Word five.
Brian Bonnet, Word four.
Teresa Perez Armandari, Word one.
Pam Hart, Word two.
Karen Matthew, Word three.
Connie Brown, Superintendent.
Pat Gaudier, at large.
Pam Albert, at large.
Jason Lebec, Mayor.
Gabriel Esperdol, Student Representative.
Jillian Dumay, Student Representative.
Abigail Foché, Student Representative.
Mark Conrad, Business Manager.
Sue Doris, Assistant Superintendent.
All right, thank you everyone for being here this evening. We are going to start our evening off with our swearing in. None of the 21, 22 school committee student reps, as it says on the agenda however, but the 22, 23 swearing in of the school committee reps. So if I can invite the three of you to come on up. All right, so these fine folks here were the three who were nominated to vote on Friday here. They were elected to be this year's reps for the students on the school committee. However, it's two, we have three this evening. We will have three this year because we have two seniors and we are ended by two seniors. So our junior sort of learning works for our two seniors. So with that in mind, we'll do the swearing in. I will do one at a time, so just repeat after me. I'll take it in small digestible chunks for you to repeat back after me, okay? Gabriel, we'll start with you. If you could please raise your right hand. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I shall remain a citizen thereof and that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent upon me as student representative to the school committee according to said constitutions, the laws of the state, and ordinances of this city. Congratulations. Jillian, your turn. I, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I remain a citizen thereof and that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent upon me as student representative to the school committee according to said constitutions, the laws of the state, and ordinances of this city. Nice job. One last one. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I remain a citizen thereof and that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent upon me as student representative to the school committee. School committee. According to said constitutions, the laws of the state and ordinances of this city. Congratulations to you three, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, all right, come on up and see, thank you. All right, let's move, let's move on with the approval of tonight's agenda, including the approval of the minutes from the August 17th, as well as the certificate nominations of Brittany Martin, Claudette Pullen, Mary Majores Collins, and Alice Crawford. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Thank you. Pam, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments on that one? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, motion passes. Thank you. All right, let's open it up to public participation at this time. If you have any members from the public who would like to come address the school committee, you can come on up to the podium. Hello, welcome. Can you state your name and your association with the school committee, please?
I'm Warren Lunick. I'm a math teacher at Auburn Middle School. I don't often come to the school committee meetings, but when I do, it's to share something positive. So the last time I was here, one of our ed techs, Josh Harris, had been hired as a teacher and happy to be back. Claudette Pullen, who's a ed tech three at my school, has been given a great opportunity and a well-deserved one, and she'll be teaching social studies right next door to me on my team. I am super excited about it and this whole school is, quite frankly, and I was just, I need to come down and just give my support because that's what I do for people in my building when, when something great happens, so I wanted to share that. And we're off to an awesome start. Looking forward to a good year.
Awesome, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Hi, welcome.
Hello, I'm sure you know me. John Stark.
Thank you, sir.
My son Bryce. All right, I'm going to bring up something and I know it's going to touch a nerve with you especially. First of all, you have these young kids under the constitution, but you violated my constitutional rights. I just want to keep reminding you of that, okay? Along with the superintendent, okay? I'll be dealing with that later. Last time I was here, I spoke to you folks about teachers reading transgender garbage in our schools and you've done nothing about it, apparently. And I'm tired of the police being called on me. I went to the little pop school social on last Tuesday, a week ago Tuesday, the day before school, and our lovely little Ms. Klein over here decided that when she seen me, she was going to run and call the police on me. Purely legal to be in that school. When I told you a while back that I was being harassed by Mrs. Klein and Mrs. Smart, I'm going to lead you to my son. Who's been really polite at that school?
You.
Who's been really rude to me at that school? Absolutely. It's pretty sad that I got to bring my eight-year-old in here to defend me, isn't it? None of the parents like Mrs. Klein. Am I getting through on that? Then you're reading trans-
Sir, right now it's, sorry, to point a quarter, you cannot come up to the-
Ma'am, ma'am, let me finish and I'll leave. Let me finish.
You cannot come up to the microphone and speak derogatorily about any employee here. There are chains of command and you need to follow them. If you'd like to speak in general terms, I understand that you have some history at that school. I fully understand. I do. And at this point, is there something that you would like to state that does not name names?
Absolutely, absolutely. Now that I pointed the culprits out, I think we've gotten past that part, haven't we? Now we need to get past the part where we remove her from her position because I have several parents that don't know about the-
And sir, you are still on that, that line. We cannot discuss employment.
Yes, we can because it has to do with the transgender material. None of the parents know. So what the superintendent did the last time I was here, she sent me a complaint form. First of all, that's not required curriculum in the school, is it?
Actually, it's my understanding that the superintendent of school sent you our policies regarding teaching about controversial and sensitive issues. She sent you our policies on exemption from required instruction. She sent you our policies on selection of educational materials, and she sent you our policies on citizens' challenge of educational forms. Those are the appropriate-
No, she didn't. I have the complaint form on my table, which I didn't bring, and I have a 10-page dissertation on how great the vaccines are. That's what she sent me.
Sir, is there anything right now that the school-
I want to know what you're going to do about the transgender material in the school. Now that my son's moved up a grade, you got a second grade teacher with the book still in her class, and you got inappropriate material in the class. He already has a book that we have at the house.
So we are following the policies at the school committee and we are asking the superintendent to make sure she is reinforcing those policies, sir. That is the level to which we can take this.
Is the superintendent here today?
Sir, you are directing your comments to me as this is a school committee meeting. I understand that frustrates you.
I'm not frustrated at all. You should be the one to be frustrated.
Well, at this point, I can only answer you what I have, what I understand to be true.
So this is what's going on all over the country, is when people in charge like yourself start brushing us aside, we're not, we're not getting nothing done and you continually interrupt me. You think that it's not important to the parents. I'm telling you that there are parents there that don't know about this. That's why she called the police on me because I was speaking to a group of parents. She looked right down at the hall, looked at me. 10 minutes later, the cop came in ready to arrest me. That's harassment. I had every right to be in that school. You turned the microphone off, didn't you?
I don't have those powers.
You laugh, you laugh at this. This is serious business.
I'm not laughing at anything. I'm laughing at the fact I did, it was not going to laugh.
Madam Chair, point of order, I think we're over the time limit, please.
Absolutely, we are now over the time limit, but sir, there are-
My constitution doesn't give me two minutes.
No, but our policies do.
Now, I'd like to ask you before I leave, what are you going to do about the transgender material in our school?
Personally, sitting here right now, sir, there's nothing I can do.
No, I don't expect, I expect an answer and so do the other parents.
Absolutely.
I'm here representing the parents.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
You have not gone through the curriculum, nor have you, nor have you pulled the teacher aside because I can tell you what, if the Republicans win the-
Sir, I'm sorry, you're over your time limit at this time. I understand your frustration.
Let me finish and I'll leave. When the Republicans, I'm not political, but when they win the House back, you're going to see rules change and there are going to be felonies.
Thank you, sir.
You have a nice day.
You too.
This isn't the last. I'll see you in court and you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Have a great evening, sir.
Please don't call people pricks either.
Is there anyone else who would like to come join for public participation this evening?
You already heard from me, but I, you'll need to share something else positive after that, so I saw some wonderful photos of the sunflowers that were passed out to the staff and students from the Sherwood Heights Garden, which is the best garden in the Twin Cities, if you ask me. So I just thought that was really cool that they do that every year. It was, that garden's pretty amazing. Drive by, the sunflowers are like six, seven feet high.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to join us for public participation this evening? All right, seeing none, we're moving on to presentation from the administrators, opening of school.
Thank you. So if we can start with the elementary administrators, if you want to come on up to the front row, and we will ask each of you to give short remarks about the opening of school. And I think we'll start with East Auburn. So Michelle, you're first up, so let's hear, how did it go?
All right, can you hear me? Always a pleasure, thank you. I want to say personally and professionally, I feel like East Auburn is off to a great start, in part to my fellow colleagues behind me that have been super supportive as I start this journey, so I wanted to say thank you to all of them. I also think that one of the highlights for back to school has been the way in which the maintenance department, custodial department, has risen to the occasion once again of creating an amazing, clean, and beautiful learning environment for our schools to be, our kids to be welcomed back to. The teachers take great pride every year in coming back and setting up their classrooms for learners who are eager to get back into school. And then, of course, that all culminated in an open house that happened the night before or the evening before school started. We had a vast majority of our families show up in full force with lots of excitement and were amazingly receptive to me and to the other teachers and in seeing all the families engaged together in coming back physically into the building. So that was very exciting. Our enrollment is pretty steady from last year to this year. We started the year last year with 166 kids. Right now, we are at 167 for this year, so very steady. And great things are happening all over the building. There's already signs of learning hanging up in the hallways and kids seem excited and engaged and we're off to a great start. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Eric?
Hello, everybody. So Washburn Elementary School, it's been, it's been a pretty awesome start. We had a great turnout for our open house and that, that sort of kicked it off. Parents have been incredibly welcoming to me and it's, the students as well have been very, very welcoming. And it's, it's, it's been easy to be positive in that building, you know, to have a positive vibe. The teachers, when I see the teachers and the students reunited, it's, it's like, you know, it's, it's like they, they missed each other over the summer. We had a lot of work done around the facility, so I think it looks really nice on the outside of the building. Inside looks great, too. In the back, we have this beautiful field that the kids are so excited to finally get out there and that are already asking for soccer nets and everything, so. Now, it's, it's been really great, you know, we've spent a lot of time prepping for, you know, setting up classroom culture and setting up the school culture, getting everybody into the swing of things. We have a literacy night scheduled for next week, which is awesome, and so it's, it's pretty exciting at Washburn. Our enrollment, last year in the first day of school, we had 240 students, and this year on the first day of school, we had 250 students. So it's very steady, you know, obviously it fluctuates, but it's, it's been a pretty, pretty awesome start to the year for Washburn.
Great, thanks, Eric.
Absolutely.
Mike, how about Walton?
Hello, everyone. And like my colleagues, we're off to a great start at Walton, and we, actually, I'd say it's probably our best start in 10 years because I think the excitement and the energy of just being back without masks and, you know, on the other side perhaps of, of COVID, we hope, there's a renewed energy which is really welcoming and that was evident at our open house, which was also well-attended and for the first time to see families coming into the building and, you know, because they hadn't been in the building, many of them, for two years, so, which was really, really great. I've been lucky to be in every classroom multiple times a day and super excited to see, this week especially, the kickoff to our new math program, the illustrious math program, and I, we're going to do great things with that this year. It's really exciting to see the kids talking about already and wondering about what, how to solve problems and verbalizing their solutions, so it's really, really great. Our enrollment is, is slightly down from last year. We started last year at 209 students, we're down to 197, but also we reduced our pre-K, so that's, that's, comes into play with that as also, but we also added students to our Wings program, which is the renaming of Students with Autism program, from eight students to 13, so we're slightly up in that program, which is really great and off to a good start. And today, we had our first school assembly and as our tradition has been since I've been at Walton, we gathered around the flagpole and we gave tribute to 9/11 briefly and made it about a day of service. And they're currently writing letters to, and cards to our local fire department and police folks, so those will be delivered next week. So, but we're off to a great start, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Cheryl?
Well, Sherwood is also off to a great start. Our enrollment is 324 for our opening this year. That is down from 351 last September. Our class sizes range from a low of 13 in our, one of our pre-K classrooms into our first grades to a high of 20 in one of our second, one of our third, and one of our sixth grade classrooms. That increase, that number of being at 20 is partially due to the fact that we were not able to hire for three positions, a first grade, kindergarten, and a third grade position. Fortunately, we were able to absorb the students in those classrooms and that shifted a teacher around and were able to keep our numbers reasonable, even though we didn't have those three teachers. We did also just want to note that our kindergarten classrooms are at 16 and we have four students that are going to Walton for this year in order to keep, to keep those numbers manageable, so thank you to Mike Davis and Walton for taking those students on. In terms of filling other positions, filling our ed tech positions has continued to be a challenge. We have three special education ed tech vacancies at this time. Our open house on August 30th was a huge success. I handed out well over 200 scavenger hunt checklist to our students and it was a really wonderful evening listening to all the excited chatter of the students and their families and the staff. Our opening days have been equally successful. Our teachers have focused on setting expectations, teaching routines, and building community in their classrooms. And today, Mr. Murray's fifth grade class delivered sunflowers grown in our school garden to all, all of the staff members in the building. The atmosphere in the building is very positive and very full of energy and we are looking forward to a great school year.
Thanks, Cheryl. And Fairview, Celeste?
Well, we're back at Fairview and it's been great. It started with three really productive workshop, teacher workshop days. Staff was excited. I think Michelle mentioned, maintenance department did a great job. The grounds look great, the building looks great, looks nice and shiny and ready for our guests on open house. And when you have an event at Fairview, people come and they came, so it was, it was really nice to have people in the building. It's nice to have visitors coming in the building beyond the entryway now. It's funny because the secretaries are still hesitant and they're walking around like, no, no, you can let them in, so we're getting there. We have lots of parents ready to volunteer and getting those forms out, so open house was exciting. The kids just look happy to be back, honestly, and so I've been in the classrooms several times, which I'm not sure that makes the teachers really happy because I disturb everybody and then I'm like, hey, hi, I'll leave now. But they're, they're ready, they're, they're learning. Yesterday, the rain, I walked in and everyone was just quiet and focused. I was like, wow, hasn't rained here in a long time. We didn't know the effects, but, so it's just, it's been a really good place. I do want to give kudos to the transportation department. Things have been going well. I know that's a, that's a real struggle at the beginning of school, making sure everybody gets to where they need to be, and we've had no students returned and the buses have been running, so we really appreciate their hard work. So yeah, takes a village, but we are really happy to be back and things are going well. I think that's it. Oh, my enrollment. I started last year at this time at 418 and we are up, we are at 468 right now, so our enrollment is up a little bit. We did add a pre-K session, so that is part of that. And our class sizes range from a low of 13 to a high of 21. Nobody has 13 across the board, but we have one class here and there at 13 and then our upper grades have 20 and 21, but honestly, things are going well and it doesn't, they're not skipping a beat, so it's all good.
Thank you very much. Stephanie is not available to be with us this evening, so Park will give us a report at the next committee meeting. If I could change up and ask the middle and high school administrators to come forward. Are we able to ask a question about the elementary? I'm just curious if the parking improvements at Fairview have been completed and if that's improved anything thus far?
Yes, they are completed. They've been completed. We have new parking spots, so that's great. We have, I feel like we have plenty of parking and I didn't look outside for open house because I didn't want to see, so I don't know how that was, but I didn't have anyone complaining. And then they did widen the entryway a little bit and they, they put a stripe, which I think does help to show that people can kind of come in and out at the same time. And so honestly, we, it, it's pretty efficient. We didn't have a crossing guard yesterday, so I was the crossing guard and so I was watching it from a different side of the street and we're out of there and even if there's a little bit of a backup, it's one, two, three minutes and, and we're pretty efficient, so I think it's helped. I mean, I would have loved it wider, but it is what it is. No, there's no more room, but it, it looks really good and they were, they, they were very efficient with it, so. So thank you.
Okay, I'll sit. So Mr. Wilson, come on up. How's Auburn Middle School?
Hi. So thank you for all of your support, really do appreciate it. The energy at AMS right now is extremely positive. There's a lot of good things happening over there. We've had a lot of training so far this year with historic practices, responsive classroom, and we have done a lot of training with systems. So we're coming up with our positive systems to support students this year with their academics, behaviors, and also professional development for teachers. We've initiated a project called SOAR, which stands for Strength, Opportunities, Aspirations, and Results, and what we're trying to do is work with students and work with staff to come up with solutions for problems before they become problems, which is pretty exciting and so far, so good. Student attendance so far has been 96%. We're completing our work this week with having students power vote their, their roles for our values of the school, so we're giving students voice and choice in our building. Our goal is to become a student-led building before, before the year is up and we're very excited to have that progress quickly so far this year. We have increased communication with our larger community, hopefully to, hopefully so all families feel included at AMS. Admin and staff are working tirelessly in creating positive relationships that make for a stronger school community with our adults as well as our students. I want to thank the Auburn administrators and Connie and Sue in supporting, making the middle school whole by moving some staff to support the completion of some of our teams. We are rumor right now, we have 518 students, up 12 from last year. We have the largest eighth grade class currently for the, for the, for the next seven years in the building right now, and it's pretty exciting because we're still down three full-time staff, which is almost a complete team. We've made some changes to our team structure, so we now have three-person teams and what that allows us to do is when we hire someone to fill in those empty positions, we can just transition the team from a three to four-person team, leading to less transitions for students who may have some trauma based on that. We also have eight current ed tech openings and they're very hard to find currently, not just for us, but for other districts. So Mr. Tiber and I are in classes almost every day, almost all the time, supporting staff. It's been very well-received by staff and well-received by kids. I love having the conversations with the students in the hallway. It's been great getting to know the Auburn community and it's been a lot of fun getting to know the Auburn parents and Auburn students and I really have a- And I really have appreciated the transition here and looking forward to a nice, strong, positive year at the middle school. So.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah. Ask questions. Yes.
I was wondering how you split up the three-person teams. Is it like one teacher does math and science, another does history, English? Like, how does that kind of split up?
That's a fantastic question. So we separate the three-person team by what was missing. So we're currently looking for a math teacher and two science teachers, right? So a three-person team, if you teach reading and social studies and math, and you're looking for a science person, everyone teaches one science class. So when we do get a science teacher in the building, it's an easy transition to have them just take the science classes. So we're trying to make the transition smooth and easy, not just for students, but also for staff. And we think we have a pretty good system. So hope to try it out soon. Hope to get some people applying and get those positions filled. But right now, our class sizes run between 19 and 26. And that's pretty high, 26. But it's manageable. So far, we've done a fairly decent job with the blend of students, where the classes are operating at really, really a high rate of success. So I'd like to see class sizes drop a little bit. And of course, that will happen when we get to hire some staff. But you know anybody who teaches science who lives in Auburn, just, you know, saying, just saying. I know somebody. Yes?
You said, you mentioned that there's more communication with families than before. What are you doing to facilitate that?
Yeah, so we're on social media now. So we have four different ways for parents to hear from us. We're on Twitter, we're on Facebook. I've been sending home text messages and emails to parents once a week. So we're really engaging that way. And the information that we're sharing is pertinent to what's going on in school at the time. So it's not just a general message. It's about calendar dates, important events. And we're asking parents to come join the PTO. We've started a PTO this year, so we're trying to get more community involvement at the middle school. Any way we can get parents in the building is going to be a positive for us. So we've had athletics in the building already. We had two open houses that were very well received. We filled the gym for seventh grade. I think the eighth-grade parents thought they knew what they were doing already. But it would have been nice to see more of them. But we still had quite a few eighth-grade parents there as well. We did a conversation on restorative practices. So in my communications, we're also offering training with parents on restorative practices and how to communicate with your children in the same way we're communicating with our children. So we're trying to use our communication as more, you know, more than just, you know, school photos are this Thursday. By the way, school photos are this Thursday. We're trying to use that information to, you know, offer to parents the work that we're doing with their students in our building so everyone feels included. We don't want anyone to be surprised what's going on at school. So open communication, open instruction, open everything, just open. We're open. We're open for business. We're ready to go.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Ms., all set? Thanks, Ben.
Is that it? All right.
Anybody else? Mr. Aneer? Edward Little High School?
Good evening. And we began our school year this year at Edward Little with our world-famous ninth-grade kickoff day. And some of our student reps were some super-strong leaders in helping our ninth graders on their first day of school. It was an all-day event to give them an opportunity to be able to get a stronger sense of what is life like in the building on a daily basis and get some of their routines and have an opportunity to walk through some of their classes. And that was really great. And it was one of the big parts of the day. There's a lot of socialization that takes place. They haven't seen each other all summer. So the barbecue is always well-attended by staff and students to really kind of kick off the year. And that was a big start. The beginning days of school have been fantastic. The kids are flowing through the hallways, finding their way to classes. It's always a real fun adventure to help some of the underclassmen with the upperclassmen locate certain classrooms and changes in teachers. So that's been really exciting. And just, you know, as we know, the building works when there's kids in it. And that's been really awesome. And staff have been their world-class self and are right out there helping and assisting. And they have already begun the instruction. I'm hearing homework is on the table for many, many of the classes. And so there's a welcome-to Edward Little moment for ninth graders on a regular basis. So those are real things that are taking place as we speak. For some of the numbers, we have six new teachers. Four of them are onsite right now. Two are in the pipeline to be joining us as they transition from one district to another. We have SOS onsite with us now. We have one new guidance counselor, one new ed tech, and two new assistant principals who are rocking the sock sauce of everybody. We've already begun our data meetings on 12th grade information. We have a strong curriculum review process going on this year. We will have eight points of information going out to families. So if you hear me, please be sure that your email addresses are correct on the student emergency cards. We have a new website that is aligned with the district website. So the intent is to make sure that the calendar is much more user-friendly and much more up-to-date and current so we can locate not only after-school events, but sporting events, and as well as our co-curriculars with drama and music. Those are big deals that we want to make sure get promoted. Our ninth-grade restorative team practices are already off and running through mentors and through the opening days. You'll be hearing about that later this month. But a lot of focus on a sense of belonging, EL culture, resilience, conflict resolution. Getting in my shameless plug, open house is tomorrow night. If you haven't received the robocall, 6 to 8 o'clock. Please bring your student's schedule because you will be following their schedule through the evening. We'll kick off in the gym at 6 o'clock. Terms of data, last year, we had 890 students on September 1st. It was 229 ninth graders, 244 10th graders, 216 11th, and 201 and 12th. This year, we have 253 in ninth, 230 in 10th, 253 in 11th, and 219 in 12th, for a total of 955. So we're up 65 students. And then, just because I want to share because I'm kind of excited, this is all unofficial data that we've been pounding on and crunching. We are sitting at 88.546% or 89% graduation for the class of 2022, which is up from the 72%. So a growth of 17% for this past graduating class. That was a tremendous amount of work by many students, many staff, and a lot of adults, one of whom is sitting behind me, Mr. Gray. But we continued that process throughout the summer. And I still have hope for three more students, who wouldn't add to this, but I really want to be sure that they get themselves across the finish line and find that pathway for themselves. So we're not giving up hope on them at all, and we're going to stay committed to them. But I was really proud. We've been cranking the numbers and really making sure that we've evaluated that four-year cohort, which we're based on. These are unofficial, but by Mike, our team's calculation, 89%.
Congratulations. Thanks, Scott. Lila, you want to come on up and talk about RETC?
Hello, good evening. So RETC is settling into a new school year at Lake Street School. We've undergone some significant changes and improvements to our school and program in the past year. And we're looking ahead for more upgrades to this 100-year-old building. 2023 will be a year of celebrating Lake Street School, built in 1923. So the celebration begins at our open house on Monday, the 19th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. So we welcome you all to join us and see what our program is all about. We began this school year with 19 students enrolled in the RETC program, which is up from where we ended the school year at 15 because we readjusted the SOS program to go up to the high school. So 58% of those students are Auburn students. And we only have two teachers and a long-term sub right now. So I'm hopeful that we will fill the teacher position soon so that we can welcome the students who are on our growing wait list right now. The RETC staff continues to embrace the restorative approach as part of our practice this year, as well as a focus on social and emotional learning. We provide opportunities for exploration in our new maker space. And we plan on revitalizing the culinary program in our industrial kitchen that we have at RETC. I'm excited to continue to learn and grow with the RETC students and staff this school year. So thank you.
Thanks, Lila. Any questions for Lila? Thank you. Melissa, Franklin Alternative.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Our start to the 2223 school year was already going to be amazing because we weren't under construction. So that was, sorry, Mr. Aneer, that was a great start to come into a building that was actually put together and ready to go. We started off pretty strong with our staff development days. We welcomed two new teachers to our team this year, spent a lot of time digging into the core values of our program and really centering ourselves into what our mission is to provide for our students. All of our students started on the 31st with our normal procedures of going through our core values, respect, responsibility, accountability, community, and tolerance. So they did a great job. We had, I'm looking at my numbers. So this year, we started with 82 students enrolled, up just slightly from last year's 71. Currently, with our current referral process, we are at ordneering capacity in grades 10 through 12. And we have some limited openings in grades 7 through 9. So we're in the process of taking in some of those new referrals, but certainly a very busy, very productive place right now. So moving forward this year, I had spoken to this before, but we are looking forward to helping our students continue to make academic growth, continue to work on their testing literacy as well as their core areas of instruction. And things look very promising. We have a great staff working together really well, lots of good, positive energy in our building. Oh, and I will mention, we have our largest senior class in my 15 years in Auburn of 31 seniors, which is pretty extraordinary for Franklin. So looking forward to working with my colleagues up the hill to get those kids across the finish line. So that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Melissa? Melissa, how many of your seniors graduated last year?
So we had 16, and they all, they all made it in one way or another.
Congratulations. That's very impressive. Any questions from the school committee?
I just have one question. I missed what the current enrollment is at AMS.
518.
Just to add my voice to the information that you've already heard, we had a phenomenal start. Dr. Doris and I had an opportunity to visit all of the schools. And it was a wonderful beginning to see the kids back and the teachers back. We're just off to a great year. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We have, as our school committee reps are new, we do not have, unless Abby, you want to jump in with something? Go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to share a few words. Last night, the girls' soccer team had our game away at Hampden, which is a little north of Bangor. So very long drive, two hours. We were supposed to leave at 12:30, get dismissed from class early. And unfortunately, our bus driver got COVID. So we were not able to leave at that time. And we had to postpone until after the Auburn School Department buses made their loops around. And I just wanted to say thank you to Ray, to anyone who knows him. He's a wonderful man, very kind. And he was fortunate enough for our team to tag along with us. We got home really late at 11:45 last night. So he was, and he made his morning bus run at 7:00 a.m.
And he lives out of town.
Yeah. So I just wanted to say thank you to Ray and to all of the bus drivers in the Auburn School Department.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, moving on, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown, you are back on.
Thank you very much. Chairperson Matthew, there are just a couple of items. Believe it or not, it is time to start thinking about the budget development process for fiscal year '24. And I included the budget calendar in your packet. There is both the administrative, sort of the behind-the-curtain information that we do with that, and then the school committee budget discussions. And as we have in the past, in November, the second school committee meeting is a workshop on the budget. And Mr. Conrad and I will talk about things, potentials, class sizes. We spend a fair amount of time talking about the EL debt and the debt service because that's quite impactful on the budget. We will talk about ESER because this is the last year for that particular grant. That one's being phased out. In December, Mr. Croll and I will set a date for a joint meeting with the city council and the school committee. That's gone over really well in the last couple of years. Generally, it's the third Monday in December, but that remains to be set. And then the school committee's budget discussion. So for those of you who have gone through this before, which I think is everybody now, the whole month of March, just every Wednesday, block it out, and we'll go through the presentations. They're listed here, so you'll know what you can anticipate. On the 5th of April, which sounds like a long time away from now, but believe it or not, it'll be here before you know it, there will be the school committee's public hearing and then a budget workshop. Your approval will come May 3rd, I hope. And then June 13 is for sure. And that's the budget validation referendum. So that is the committee calendar. The next item is in your packet. And I think this was referenced in the curriculum committee is a letter from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. This is NIASC. And we received an update. They responded to our letter that we filed. And they will issue us a special progress report by June 1st, 2023. Did I say that correctly? That we have to, I'm sorry, we have to provide them with a special progress report. And really, the only item that remains to be finished is the construction of the new school. That's really what the whole, right now, we're on probation, but that's really because of the building. And the curriculum simply cannot be delivered because of the state that that facility is in. But that will change. So that's in your packet for information. I did want to share with you, and where's Tanya? Tanya, you want to pull up? This is our back-to-school video that we have started. And we.
Hi, my name is Connie Brown.
I am the superintendent for the Auburn School Department, and it is my great pleasure to welcome you to the 2022-2023 school year. This year is going to be extraordinary for Auburn. We are opening a new Edward Little High School in June, and the next 10 months will be very busy as we get ready to move into the new school. I am very proud to be associated with Auburn. We have great kids, there are scholars, athletes, musicians, and artists, and our staff is world-class. We're happy that you have joined us, and we hope you have a great year.
Hi, Auburn community. I'm Ben Wilson. I'm the new principal of Auburn Middle School. Welcome to the new school year. We're excited to have you here. Auburn pride all the way. Can't wait to see you in our buildings.
Hi, East Auburn students and families. I'm Michelle Gagne, your proud new administrator here at East Auburn Community School. I cannot wait to welcome each and every one of you. We have some exciting new things happening inside the building and around our great school, and again, I just can't wait to see you all very, very soon.
Hello, Auburn. I'm Eric Ray, and I'm the new principal here at Washburn Elementary School. I'm incredibly excited to meet my students and to get to know you. I'm really looking forward to an amazing school year.
There it is. So thanks, thanks to the folks who were voluntold that they needed to be in the video.
I noticed there was a lot of newbies on there. Celeste didn't notice you. Mike Davis didn't notice you. Cheryl, yeah, I noticed the newbies got to do that one.
I also want to thank Mr. Robinson and his son, who did the editing and the shooting and the B-roll, and it turned, and the music, so Peter, thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Peter.
So the last thing on my agenda, which is very quick, I want to mention to the committee that the central office staff had an open house today. We received some feedback that folks didn't know some of the people who were there, because we've had some personnel changes, and so I put out in my Sunday night newsletters that today was a day, and the staff put out chocolates and cookies and signs. They were really funny about what they do and who they are, and, and people came through. And so they had a chance to meet the literacy coaches, and Sue and I, and some of the other folks that work in central office, like the payroll person, who's pretty important to make sure you get paid correctly, and it was a nice occasion. So I want to thank my staff, because they put themselves really out there to do a great job, and to all those folks who came. So just FYI for the committee. Thank you, and that's it for me.
Thank you very much. All right, no chairperson's report this evening. City Council update, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I got a couple. I'd like to start off, unfortunately, with some sad news. They're not making rulers any longer.
Oh, stop. That was a dad joke if you didn't get that one. Ha ha, right?
Get a 12-bit ruler. Thank you. I've been holding that in for like three weeks now.
I know.
Karen knows. And the fact that nobody laughed, and you're in administration, and mostly dads. Thank you.
You didn't give them a second to process.
You didn't give, so I do have an ask, a couple updates from the city council just last night. First of all, I did talk to the school committee several months ago about a program, incentive to help build auxiliary dwelling units, secondary units on property. We did appropriate that money last night, $250,000 from our ARPA, matched by the Maine State Housing Association, so that program will be rolled out in November. The way it's worked, it's really an ideal fit for retirees and those just starting off in the workforce, i.e. for second, third-year teachers, firemen, police officers, and so forth, so I encourage everyone to look at that. While we did that, we also formed a mayor's ad hoc committee, and I'm seeking help from students and staff, faculty, to sit on this committee. The committee's charge is to kind of look at and judge the aesthetic of the different neighborhoods within our city, then help and work with private architects to develop a set of plans on different housing types, from ADUs, carriage houses, tight, non-traditional homes, duplexes and triplexes, that are permit-ready, so that residents in Auburn who want to build one of these homes can go and get a free architectural plan and a permit turnkey. So I think it's a great example, or a great opportunity, I should say. If you have any students in CAD Draw art classes, architectural classes, that want to join this ad hoc, please email me. If there's any staff that are interested in this, the aesthetic, the archetype, if you would, of house design and architecture, I need 10 people, so we'd like to get this turned up fairly quickly. So those are my updates.
Thank you very much. All right, committee reports. We have, sorry, any questions for Jason? Sorry.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. What, what would be the time constraint for something for this committee?
Usual committees are probably three hours per month, either one or two meetings, and it could be in subcommittees, and it could involve some homework after the fact. I take, for example, take some pictures of Davis Avenue houses for different styles, okay, and what do they have in common, for example, shingled siding and so forth. And then really, the architect's going to drive a lot of that process, along with the chair. You have to be determined.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Committee reports. Standing committee, we have a finance meeting tomorrow night. The agenda is listed there. Policy committee, we see you have been busy. We have lots of policies on the agenda, so we'll get to those in just a moment. And the curriculum subcommittee met just this evening, so we will have notes from their meeting at our next meeting. Does anyone want to jump in and add anything from their committee work? All right, seeing none. We have no old business, so we're going to move into some new business. New business is quite likely this, these first, this first jump, so let me get this all out. Can I entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $125,000 from the school department's unexpended balances at the end of the 2122 fiscal year to the Edward Little High School Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of funding capital improvement projects, facility upgrades, and plant maintenance at the new Edward Little High School and adjacent athletic facilities? Can I have a motion, please?
To move.
Thank you, Pat.
Second.
Thank you for the second. Any public comment? I don't see anyone here from the public this evening. Public comment, seeing none. All right, my only comment will be to remember this, the conversation that we had back with the city council, I believe, this winter at some point, letting them know that the school department's intention is to be proactive rather than reactive. We want to set up these funds in order to maintain this beautiful new building that is being built right now. All right, any other questions, comments, or debate on that? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Along the same lines, can I entertain a motion to transfer, the transfer of $125,000 from the school department's unexpended balances at the end of the 2122 fiscal year to the school technology equipment reserve fund for the purpose of funding purchase and maintenance of computers, tablets, audiovisual equipment, and related technology for the school department? Could I have a motion, please?
To move.
Thank you, Brian. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions, comments, debate on this one? Same ones, starting to set up monies for when we need to buy new technology. No questions, comments? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Next one, has a motion to award a contract for Franklin School siding replacement to Callahan Construction, and you have the recommendation there. Do I have a motion?
To move.
Thank you, Pat. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions, comments, debate on that one? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Next one, here's where the policy committee kicks in. This all had really to do, your policies looked at monies, looked at fundraising, looked at advertising, so you took a really good deep dive into that. All right, first one is, I can entertain a motion for the first reading of policy AUB-KHB Advertising in Schools.
To move.
Thank you, Pam Hart. Second from Brian. Any questions, comments on that one? Debate on that one? Yes. Do you want to jump in? Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
I just had some constituent questions concerning advertising in school, athletics specifically. Have they been reached out to? Is that addressed?
So we invited a group that was interested in football specifically to attend the policy meeting, and they came, they presented their ideas, we had a really good dialogue. I would invite other members from the policy committee to share their impressions of that process.
That would be Dan as chair. Would you speak to that?
Did they finalize that, or did, weren't they supposed to finalize that before?
They will bring their proposal to the second meeting, because this is the first reading of the policy, and we told them that they had to get it in by, I think it's the 16th is when that agenda will go out. It's either the 15th or the 16th.
Yeah, I know they've been asking around for donations or advertisements, so.
Right. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I was wondering.
Sure. Can you use your mic, please, Clarissa?
I was just wondering where this came from, if it, it was, if it's something that's being done at the, all over the state, or where the...
I think it was just a parent that has a child in there that wanted to, you know, better the program, advertising, I believe, yeah.
Oh, so, or you asked Clarissa why this chunk of policies? Were there changes, or did these need to be drastically updated?
Why, why the specific changes came up? I mean, this is a new, this red section is entirely new, right? Yeah. So I was just wondering what motivated it, just curious. But if that's a silly question, that's...
Sue, do you want to respond to the question?
It's based on updates in the law.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Next is the first reading of policy AUB-JJE Student Fundraising Activities. Can I have a motion to approve policy AUB-JJE, please?
To move.
Thank you, Pam. Brian, second. Questions, comments on this one? Pam?
I have a couple. I was reading this, and the C, where it says, I know that, I've noticed when you guys redo your, your policies, that you've changed the word board to school committee, and this is something very small, but on the, at C, it says use of students and PTO, parent group fundraisers, the board recognizes, so that probably should say school committee. And also, I know that, well, having been on the PTA, the, the Auburn School Department refers to the parent groups as a PTA, not PTO, but I don't know if that's a big deal or not.
Is it an association or an organization?
I know that we call ourselves a PTA, right? Oh, is it PTO? I'm sorry.
Yep.
It's been a long time. Never mind. And also D, there's also where it says school committee should be changed, the board encourages the use of fundraising calendar at each school.
Yep.
Or I should say school committee. Sorry.
Thank you. I'll make those changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments? Debate on that one? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next is a first read of policy AUB-JJE-Fundraising Activities Plan. Can I entertain a motion to approve that policy, please?
To move.
Thank you, Brian. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam Albert. Questions, comments on that one? Pam Hart?
I'm sorry.
No, go for it.
I read these, and I noticed...
Do not apologize.
Where it says signature of responsible person for fundraiser, I think fundraiser should be one word. At the bottom, where it says signature of treasurer advisor, treasurer...
Can you say it? One word? Okay.
Is that okay? And I say that because I noticed a change in it in a previous document, that's why. Oh, and also where it says dates of fundraising activity, that should probably be one word.
I just want to say I appreciate as someone who's, who like quickly looks at the notes, compares, compares the first policy to the second policy, that I appreciate people who do a really good close read like that. I really do, Pam. So do not apologize again for doing close reads like that. Thank you. I appreciate that.
We might also want to make that change in the title as well.
Yes, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments, debate on that one? All right, I'll call for a motion. All those in favor? And motion passes. Thank you. We'll make those noted. Those changes will be up and ready for the next one. All right, I believe I'm up to G. First reading of policy AUB-DD Grants. Can I entertain a motion, please?
To move.
Thank you, Pat. Brian, is that your second?
Yes.
Thank you, Brian. All right, any questions, comments on that one? Pam? Look at me, I'm not even looking at you right now, Pam.
I know. At the bottom in red, again, it says the superintendent will report such awards to the board. Probably should be school committee.
Yep.
Just to require continuity. Thank you.
All right, any others? Okay, seeing no others, can I call, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. All right, moving on to H. First reading of policy AUB-DFF Student Activities Fund. Can I entertain a motion to approve that policy, please?
To move.
Thank you, Pat. Brian, second. Any other questions, comments? Make sure it all says committee, not board. Fundraising is one word. What else, Pam?
Nope, I think that's good.
Good on that one?
This one's good.
Anything else? Any other school committee members? Questions, comments, debate on that one? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right, motion passes.
It's actually a curse to be...
No, no, I appreciate, listen, it takes the village. All right, can I entertain a motion for first reading of policy AUB-DIDA Fixed Assets? Can I have a motion, please?
To move.
Thank you, Pam Hart. Clarissa, want a second on that one?
Yes.
Okay, any questions, comments on that one? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Policy passes. Next, first reading of policy AUB-DIE Audits and Financial Monitoring. Can I entertain a motion, please?
To move.
Thank you, Pam Hart. Clarissa, want a second? Thank you. Questions, comments, debate on that one? Pam?
In the beginning, when it says the school system's books shall be audited, should it not say, should it maybe say the Auburn School Department instead of the school systems or the Auburn, because I know, again, in the past, it's, when we refer to the school, we always refer to the Auburn School Department or Auburn School System.
Yes, it'd have to be specifically spelled out.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, any others? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. Next, I'm up to letter K, if I've got my alphabet right. First reading of policy AUB-DJE Petty Cash Accounts. Can I entertain a motion, please? Thank you, Pat. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Clarissa. Any questions, comments on that one?
Yes, right here. I think they admitted the petty cash account for the school board.
Say it again, so we all hear you.
I retract my motion.
All right, any other questions, comments on that one? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, L, last one. First reading of policy AUB-DJH Purchasing and Contracting Procurement Staff Code of Conduct. Can I have a motion, please?
To move.